Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, six P. M. We will start this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you would remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Walter Hooker with the Bellevue Christian Center, I would also want to let them know that Pastor Joseph Gastinow with the Revival Tabernacle Church, who usually spends a lot of time with us here on Mondays, did pass away, and our thoughts and prayers are with that family. But please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we gather here tonight. And first of all, we want to thank you for the great love, the protection that you have provided for our fine city of Bellevue. We pray for our leadership. We pray for each and every person in our city. God, we pray for the Gastinow family and their loss. We pray for the family of these two children that were murdered right here in our city. Father, we pray that as a community, we would learn the importance of loving, caring, sharing, encouraging, and building one another up. That we would not allow these types of situations to continually occur in our city. That we take responsibility for in leading and providing a safe place for everyone that calls Bellevue their home, especially our children. Father, we ask tonight that you would guide each and every bit of business, that everyone who shares would share out of an attitude and a heart of respect, that, God, we would come with a greater desire to listen than to be heard. And, Father, that when this night is over, we can say that you are honored by everything that was said and done here tonight. In the wonderful name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Hooker. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilwoman Stinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Cook.
Here.
Councilwoman McCaw.
Here.
Councilwoman Preister.
Here.
Councilwoman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, Approval of Agenda: Consent Agenda Claims and Advisory Committee Reports, five A, Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item five B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments, questions, anything removed? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item seven is Special Presentations. We have one, seven A, Naming of Tennis Courts at Everett Park after Mr. Bill Bachelor in remembrance of his commitment to the city of Bellevue. I think Mr. Deal, Tom Deal, is here to speak on that behalf.
Good evening, and thank you so much for letting me address you this evening. You know, just recently, I went to a sporting event, and there was a name on this facility. And what it came down to is it was an individual who raised and/or provided enough financing for that installation. But the question I need to ask everybody is when it comes down to it, from a faith-based perspective especially, we talk about stewardship. And stewardship is when you give time, talent, and/or treasure. But what if your treasure is your time and your talent? And that's what we're talking about here. And I'm not going to take a lot of time because I understand you have the letter in your package that I wrote some time ago about Bill Bachelor. When I was introduced to him, I just knew him as a sweet man who, like me, retired from the Air Force and decided to go a different direction. He didn't get a job on the base, and he didn't end up working in the business community as many of us do. But rather, he dedicated himself first to his family and then to the community. And his objective was very simple. How do we make sure? How do we make sure that the young people of today are the valued members of our community later on? It's really that simple. How do we ensure that? And he had a talent for tennis. And so what Bill did, very simply, was he took his talent, dedicated his time, made sure it was all faith-based so that people understood who he was in his heart, and said, "Let's grow these people." And he did that year after year after year. He did it quietly, he did it unselfishly, and he did it with the future of our community in mind. And so when he passed away, my thought was is it cannot end here. It just can't. That would be such an injustice, not only to him, but to his family and to all of those thousands and thousands of people he impacted. And so what I simply do tonight is to say to you, can we solidify? Can we approve? Can we mandate that this tennis court, instead of having a regular name, be given a name like Bill Bachelor? Put that name on that facility so that from this point forward, his children, his grandchildren, his great-grandchildren, and all of those in the community can say, "Who is that?" And we can tell his story of what it is to be unselfish. What it is to say, "It's not about me, it's about others," giving back to them in an unselfish way. Not because I wrote a check, but because my stewardship was my time and my talent. It's really that simple. And I'm turning to you to say, "Let's do this together for all the right reasons, and name that park after Bill Bachelor." Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Tom. That was a great presentation on Bill's family's behalf. Does anybody have any questions? This is not a voting item, but we can certainly determine if there's anybody opposed to it, and then the administration can make it happen. So, Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a great idea, and I think it is important to memorialize or commemorate good things and the good people who do them. I completely appreciate that. I would just ask Leo Council, we do have a process and a procedure that we have established for naming. I just want to make sure that we have fully followed that, and I'm assuming we have. But it's better to know that now before. So, Ms. Robbins, if you could respond, please.
I will work with Jim Maristow, City Administrator, and we will reach out to you and make sure that the whole process was followed and what we need to do next.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the presentation? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Deal, for coming in.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item nine, we did have a citizen communication, but she withdrew that, so we have none this evening. Item ten is Liquor Licenses. Ten A, Recommend Approval of Application for Brian J. Fox as Manager for Cornhusker Quick Stop, Inc., Doing Business as Cornhusker Quick Stop at one oh two oh nine South Twenty-Fifth Street, Bellevue. Okay. So we'll open up that liquor license application for public hearing. So the public hearing is open. Is Mr. Fox in the crowd? Is the applicant here? Does not need to be, but just want to know for questions. Okay. Don't see him, but it is open for public hearing. If anyone would like to speak regarding the liquor application, please come forward. Okay, seeing nobody come forward, I will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application for Brian J. Fox as manager of Cornhusker Quick Stop, Inc., doing business as Cornhusker Quick Stop at one oh two oh nine South Twenty-Fifth Street, Bellevue.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Ten B, Recommend Approval of a Special Designated Liquor License for Saint Bernadette Catholic Church to Sell Beer at a Church Raffle Dinner to be held at seventy-six hundred South Forty-Second Street, Bellevue, on July tenth, two thousand twenty-one, from four P. M. to ten P. M. And again, I will open up that application for public hearing if there's anyone here to speak for or against the liquor license application. Is the applicant here by chance? Okay, so he is here if anybody has any questions. So the public hearing is open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll take a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, a special designated liquor license for Saint Bernadette Catholic Church to sell beer at a church raffle dinner to be held at seventy-six hundred South, seven six zero zero, South Forty-Second Street, Bellevue, on July tenth, two thousand twenty-one, from four P. M. to ten P. M.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item eleven, Ordinances for Adoption, third reading. We have none this evening. Item twelve, Ordinances for Public Hearing, second reading. Twelve A, Ordinance Number four zero three seven, An Ordinance to Add New Sections to Chapter Six Regarding Leash and Muzzle Requirements for Pit Bull Breeds, Breed Ambassadors, Insurance, and the N. H. S. Annual Reporting Procedures. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number four zero three seven, An Ordinance to Amend Article Two, Chapter Six of the Bellevue Municipal Code by adding new sections six dash two four through six dash two seven regarding leash and muzzle requirements for pit bull breeds, breed ambassadors, proof of insurance, animal control authorities' annual reporting to City Council, and to provide an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Got some instructions here, just so everybody knows our policy on public speaking. All speakers will be limited to five minutes each. When approaching the podium, please state your name and address and sign in on the sheet on the podium. All persons speaking are expected to be courteous, and comments shall be, shall not involve personal attacks on members of the council or staff. The use of profane or abusive language will not be tolerated. If you are here in a group with others, please have only one speaker come forward and speak on the group's behalf. Before I open that up, this was brought by Councilman Burns. I just want to make sure you don't want, you want to say anything beforehand?
No, I mean, I figure we just have the public hearing, and then if we have questions or comments, and I think some from the Nebraska Humane Society is here as well. So we can just go in that order.
Okay. All right, so I will open it up for public hearing. And if there's anybody here, just one at a time, and you can kind of line up so it's a little quicker.
Good evening. My name is Heather Noyes. I reside at thirteen eleven Sunbury Drive here in Bellevue, Nebraska. I've been a Bellevue citizen for ten years, and I am owned by four incredible dogs named Lady, Charlie, Shirley, and Annie Mae. Yes, I said owned by because they rule the roost. Shirley is a Staffordshire terrier mix, so I'm personally invested in this proposed ordinance. I'm also the director and founder of Harbor of Hope Dog Rescue, an all-breed foster home-based rescue located here in Bellevue, Nebraska. I'm here on behalf of those who are strongly opposed to this ordinance. Can those who are opposed, please identify yourself by raising your hand? Thank you, guys. According to the American Veterinary Medical Association, quote, "Breed-specific legislation is a simplistic answer to a far more complex social problem, and they have the potential to divert attention and resources from more effective approaches." The A. V. M. A. supports dangerous animal legislation, provided that the legislation does not refer to specific breeds or classes of animals. This legislation should be directed at fostering safety and protection of the general public from animals classified as dangerous. Rather than an ordinance targeting specific breeds, I strongly believe it would be more effective to focus on policies that make abundantly clear what is expected of pet owners and removing any obstacles and barriers that prevent said owners from complying with those policies. As the director of Harbor of Hope Dog Rescue, I would love to partner with city officials to provide educational opportunities, training, and resources to pet owners to enable them to be more responsible and to know and recognize what is needed to keep both dogs and the general public safe and free from harm. By offering low-cost vaccination, microchipping, and spay and neuter clinics, we remove barriers to those not able to provide adequate medical care to their pets while building and fostering relationships with the pet owners in our own city. By offering low-cost training on topics like proper leash etiquette and leash laws, knowing how to properly fit a collar or harness, and being able to interact safely with dogs, we can reduce the number of harmful interactions without punishing responsible pet owners. In short, if you want a safer community, you need to educate the humans, not muzzle the dogs, unless it's a truly dangerous dog, in which case, Chapter Six of the Bellevue City Code already addresses those situations in Section eighteen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Heather. She did get a good showing of the opponent's hands. Can I see the proponents here, if there's anybody? Okay, thank you.
My name's Jessica Perez. I've lived in Bellevue over half my life. I come to you tonight not just as a concerned citizen and a pet owner, but also as a child dog bite victim. I was ten years old when a dog that my grandparents owned for many years bit me unprovoked on the face. I was very lucky that day. I had eleven stitches, and the attending physician at the E. R. was actually a plastic surgeon, so I have little to no scarring. But I tell you that because even as a child, after that incident at ten years old, I didn't fear all dogs, because not all dogs are dangerous. The dog that bit me was a mixed breed, roughly about the same size as a pit bull, could have done more damage. I wanted to address my concern on the ordinance. I have owned dogs all my life. I work daily with my pit bull on training. I have family that are professional dog trainers and A. K. C. show dogs. A muzzle and a harness are tools, and any tool used incorrectly can cause harm. A muzzle fitted improperly can restrict breathing and panting, which could incite fear and anxiety in an otherwise well-mannered dog. A harness not fitted to the dog's shape correctly can cause chest and front limb injuries, and an incorrect size can allow a dog to simply slip out. These are not blanket solutions for an average pet owner, but should be used with research and guidance from a vet or a trainer. And what does the ordinance do when a gate is accidentally left open or a dog rushes through an open door? Accidents happen. What am I to do if an aggressive off-leash dog of any breed approaches me and my well-mannered, harnessed, and muzzled pit bull? I'm left to watch my helpless dog be mauled without any means to defend himself and risk injury to myself as well. I assure you, we have come across many unleashed dogs in Bellevue on our walks. I would also like to ask who will be trained in breed recognition as a pit bull is not a breed, but rather characteristics and physical traits that you can assign to about twenty-five other breeds of dogs. In two thousand twenty-one, I feel like we've seen enough discrimination based on how something or someone looks. Explaining to my seven-year-old daughter why I'm here tonight because our dog does not have a voice, and to show that it's fundamentally wrong to judge a living thing based on its appearance. So, council, we have a dangerous dog ordinance already, and it takes into account the specific actions of a dog and an owner. It does not punish those who abide by leash laws and people who take the time to train and maintain their pets. The ordinance is a knee-jerk reaction to a recent singular, very unfortunate event, but to pass it would be a disservice to the many Bellevue residents and dog owners who take pride in their animals, as well as value living in a diverse and tolerant city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Hello, I'm Bridgette Williams Fulton, and I reside at one oh six Inverness Court Apartment nine oh three in Bellevue, Nebraska. I come to you as a dog trainer. I work with these dogs every day, work on reaction to other dogs, leash laws, everything, that they need to be a formed, fit dog of society. I'm here for any questions that you may have, and I think that the muzzles on bully breeds is just a waste of time unless they are aggressive dogs. Any questions for me, that would be great. Just let me know.
Okay, thank you. And I, let me warn you, we do have the clock running, so there's a buzzer at the end, and it scared the heck out of me the first time I heard it. Just be ready.
My name is Kayla Howard. I reside in Ralston, Nebraska. This will be short and sweet since they're going to probably cover all the other points. I'd like to ask if the city clerk can hand a piece of paper to each of the council members?
Sure.
On this piece of paper, there's going to be three dogs on it. All I want you guys to do, once everyone has a piece of paper, is to circle the dog. There's one dog on there that is not a pit bull. Just circle that, and once you're done, hold your papers up so we can see them this way. I promise it's easy. Raise your hand if you circled. Are you guys all done? Raise your hand if you circled dog number one. As you can see, that dog looks like a lab, but is actually fifty percent pit bull. The other two dogs, one of them, the middle one, number two, is twenty-five percent pit bull. And the dog number three, the third one, is zero percent pit bull. Yes, the two and three are actually my dogs. Yes. They've all been DNA tested, and so as my point being, just by looking at a dog, you can't tell, you know, if it's a pit bull, if it's not a pit bull. N. H. S. usually goes off of if they're majority pit bull, they'd have to follow, you know, B. S. L. laws. If they're minority pit bull, they would not. However, when you have a dog that's fifty percent, you know, that could go either way. Just because that dog doesn't look pit bull, you know, doesn't mean it might not have the characteristics. Pit bulls are great dogs. I've fostered many pit bulls over the years, and I'm also a pet photographer. So I photographed a lot of pit bulls, and they're actually very photogenic dogs. But I oppose this law and hope that they'll cover the rest of the points for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Gashanat, and I live at one forty-nine zero three South Twenty-Second Street in Bellevue. I sent each of you an email earlier in the week, and I wish, or I hope that all of you had an opportunity to go over that email and kind of do your own research as far as that's concerned. I'd like to address the misconceptions regarding pit bulls and bully breeds in regards to their temperament and explain why each dog, regardless of breed, should be treated as an individual. First of all, as stated in my email, according to the Temperament Testing Society, pit bulls score within eighty-five percent, which puts them on par with a golden retriever. Having said that, though, it is important to note that all dogs need socialization in order to have a well-rounded temperament. Having a muzzle on your dog inhibits that socialization as individuals are less likely to engage and approach your dog. Secondly, the vast majority of all dogs are the product of random breeding, which means genetic traits such as personality and health concerns can vary greatly even within one breed. There are millions of dogs that fall under the label of pit bull, regardless of D. N. A. content, as you just saw. Okay? The legal definition of pit bull varies from location to location and person to person. You cannot ascribe breed traits to such genetically non-homogenous group. Having said that, it's important that all dogs, regardless of their breed, be treated as an individual. The real focus to prevent attacks from any breed of dog is to hold irresponsible and reckless owners accountable. Enforcing leash laws, pet licensing laws, and dangerous dog ordinances is a more effective solution. Breed-specific legislation continues to stigmatize and demonize these breeds of dogs. It also creates a false sense of security for our general public. You, as a council, need to look at the modern research that has been put in front of you that is based on facts, not the top media reporting websites. You have a responsibility to base your policies on facts and not fear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's Marcus Sladek. I reside with my wife, who's here tonight, Asia Sladek, at five oh four Edgewood Court. We recently moved to Bellevue in October two thousand twenty, so we're fairly new to this wonderful city. I'm a prosecutor for the city of Omaha. We have a very cute, gentle, sweet pit bull puppy. It's two years old that we adopted from the Humane Society about two years ago, which of course is why we're here. We're opposing this legislation. And if I, just at the outset, wonderful example of how politics should work, I know Councilman Burns well. We've known each other for years. I helped on his campaign, believed him to be a wonderful person, wonderful councilman. Tonight, we disagree, and that's okay. And that's how this stuff should go. We adopted our young dog two years ago from the Humane Society. It was identified by the Humane Society as a boxer-pit mix. We have not had him tested more thoroughly to determine the breed in large part because of legislation like this and the possibility of what it means for our dog. Candidly, I think he resembles most closely an American Staffordshire terrier. I think he would be subject to this kind of legislation should it be passed again, which is why we're here. My wife and I have spent thousands of dollars, countless hours, training our dog, participating in formal courses at the Humane Society, which are great programs. We've done it four or five times, separate classes with our dog. We do it on our own. It's the amount of energy we've exerted on our dog is, some people would probably think it's silly. But we certainly enjoy it, and we love it. We're so passionate about this. Today is our anniversary. We're spending it here with all of you fine people, you know, so we'll certainly remember it. But I just want to raise three arguments that occur to me in opposition of this proposal. One is, I think that there are some inherent problems with breed identification. It's already been addressed a little bit tonight. This ordinance, I don't have to recite the language, it's been recited. It looks like it applies to three particular breeds. In addition to a kind of catch-all, breed legislation includes dogs that look like pit bulls. I mean, obviously, you don't have to be a genius to understand the problems with that. Some of this is legislation on how a dog looks, okay? The reality is, if you're here, you probably know pit bull's a term of art. It's not a breed. It's a term that's, you know, been molded and adapted and adopted over years to catch many different breeds of dog. Our dog, as I said, was identified as a boxer-pit mix. If you were to go on the Nebraska Humane Society's website today, which I did, and look at their available dogs, and this is not an indictment on the Nebraska Humane Society, but what you'll see is that there are no dogs labeled as purely a pit bull. There's no dogs labeled as purely one of the breeds that would be encompassed by this legislation. I think that that's probably because it's costly to go through actual D. N. A. testing to formally identify a dog for prospective adopters. The skeptic in me believes that because of years and years of prejudice, for lack of a better word, and stigma involving pit bulls, it makes those dogs more attractive to prospective adopters. And I think what you'll find is if this legislation is passed, and a dog, by virtue of a citizen calling in or having an encounter with law enforcement in Bellevue, is deemed to be possibly a pit bull, and the owner would say, "I don't think it's a pit bull." I'm only... I on- I'm only presuming that the council would propose that the Humane Society be the entity that makes the administrative determination about how that dog is designated or identified. Okay, and so what I think that you may find is the resurrendering of dogs, which is the very antithesis of what the Humane Society is trying to do, which is save dogs and give them homes. If a person who doesn't realize that they're adopting a pit bull and then all of a sudden finds themselves in trouble with the law because they have a pit bull that they didn't realize was gonna be majority pit bull, they have to get insurance, put a muzzle on it, and maybe the dog's not used to the muzzle. They may find themselves just resurrendering the dog after frankly having been misled a little bit about the identification of the dog at the outset. Um, so that's one inherent problem I, I see with this.
Forty seconds.
Jeez, okay, um.
Just warning you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. An inconvenient truth is, listen, dogs are inherently dangerous, all of them, all shapes and sizes. They're animals that live amongst us with sharp teeth that don't think for themselves very well, okay? Um, the numbers speak for themselves. Uh, the, uh, Humane Society numbers from 2016 to 2020. I mean, there's multiple other breeds that don't encompass pit bulls that have more bites than the pit bull breeds combined. I don't see them in the ordinance. It's a fundamental problem. We've come a long way in society to not throwing a blanket over things that look the same and calling them the same just for the sake of doing it. I don't think we should do this either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, um, my name is Alicia James. I live over here in Old Town Bellevue over on Hancock Street. And, um, I'm here to speak in opposition because in all honesty, um, I've done a lot of research in the past month and none of it agrees with this. Breed-less specific legislation is definitely a reactionary legislation and I really don't think that that's what Bellevue's ever been about. It's always been about what's best for us and not just knee-jerk reactions to anything. I've lived here my whole life and I've never really considered going anywhere else just because it's been such a wonderful place to live. And when you have large organizations such as the American Kennel Club, which we do in fact list in the, uh, legislation as a potential source for breed, uh, recognition. So the American Kennel Club, the American Veterinary Medical Association, the National Animal Care and Control Association, the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and the American Bar Association all have very clear statements against breed-specific legislation because they know that it doesn't work the way we want it to. What we need to do is address the behavior of both owners and pets. It needs to be the responsibility of the owners to make sure that their pets are trained, taken care of, so that they aren't put in positions where they might react badly to something. And in all honesty, um, we're actually starting to see a large trend, both in the US and worldwide, of people who are overturning or even passing legislation to ban breed-specific legislation because it doesn't work. We can't prove that the number of attacks goes down because we require three breeds or six breeds or up to ninety breeds at one point in Italy to be banned or do any of the other requirements that we're listing here. It's not going to prevent dog attacks overall. The only way to do that is going to be addressing responsible ownership, which I know is already stuff that we list in our city ordinances as it stands. We have a lot of different sections that address owner liability. That's already there. That owners are completely responsible for anything that their pet may do while they're owning it. Um, we list the responsibilities of making sure they don't do property damage, they don't get loose. Unfortunately, I see lots of dogs walk past my house every single week that aren't leashed or they're leashed, but the leash is trailing on the ground and the owner's twenty feet away. Usually because the dog is well-trained to respond to commands, but they're still not following those rules. And if they're not following those rules, but I'm following these rules, very, very restrictive rules, it's a little unfair to the dog. I mean, I can handle it. I'm a, I'm a human. I can understand the benefits behind it. But I'm a human. My dog doesn't understand that. And when you see, um, all of the different things that go into the training, that's not something the Breed and Braster Program is not gonna be accessible to everyone with all of the costs and the time that goes into it. And that's a little unfair as well, that somebody may have a really well-trained dog that they wanna prove it, but they can't afford the class or the pre-training that they expect you to have before you go through the program. And that's unfortunate. And also I think that it's a little frightening to me that most of the, um, proposed ordinance, uh, 4037 is almost word for word from our dangerous and potentially dangerous dogs ordinance that's already in place. So what we're doing is if we pass this, most of that's already in this new ordinance. Um, and what we're doing is we're allowing three breeds to be blanket, um, determined to be potentially dangerous at minimum without the due process that any other animal would be granted. There's no animal control officer coming up to the house to figure out what's going on. There's no, uh, appeal system. They just look like that and so they're now potentially dangerous. All of these insurances and liabilities, the restrictions on how far away they're allowed to be from you or your house with a, um, the six-foot leash, the muzzle, all of that, those are in our dangerous dogs ordinance already. So either we need to follow through with what we already have, which is that a dog's actions are what we need to judge that dog by, or we need to reassess what's going on here because to just suddenly go, no, all of those are potentially dangerous without looking at the individual actions, their behaviors, their temperaments, their histories, which we would give to any other dog regardless of what they look like.
Twenty seconds.
Is a little bit unfair and it's frightening to what it means for some of our other legislation that may come up in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara O'Donnell, 11902 Jake Circle in Bellevue. Thank you for this opportunity. A lot of people before me have spoken to some specific points I would like to address, the, uh, Americans with Disabilities Act. They're vehemently opposed to breed-specific veri- legislation and I have given you copies and also some from the attorneys. Um, my dog happens to fit into the classification of a bully dog if you spread it, spread it far enough. Rottweilers used to be one of the leading bite dogs when they were really popular. They have gotten rid of that reputation, thank goodness. And as you can see, he is anything but vicious. Um, it's my belief strongly, being that I qualify for the Disability Act, that I should be able to have whatever dog meets my needs, meets my disabilities. I have a balance issue. I need a dog that's big and strong. A pit bull would fit that very well. They're big, they're strong, they're muscular, they can help pull me up. So does he. I would hate to be out and have my dog need to pick up my keys 'cause I really can't bend over to get my keys and have my dog muzzled. That does away with the ability of my dog to serve my needs. I really wish you would think about that when you blanket a statement that all pit bulls and any possible bully breed should be muzzled. I think that's a big mistake and the ADA agrees with me. I believe that it, as Americans, we have the right to own any animal that, any dog that we want. But I think we have the responsibility to be good owners, to know our dogs, to know their temperament, to know their abilities. We have a dog at home that's also a rottweiler. She wears a muzzle every time she goes out. She's not trustworthy. So a good owner, but a good owner knows their dogs. They know if their dog needs a muzzle. They know if their dog has a potential, potential to be snippy. They know. So don't punish the good owners. Just make the laws that are already there work for the owners that don't. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Can we ask Barbara to, um, identify the name of her dog as being present in the chamber, please? What is it? What's the name of your dog?
His name is Carl.
Carl.
But I will tell you that's not his real name.
Is, is he in witness protection program?
When he wears his harness, he's working. And we have had issues with people saying, "Oh, what's your dog's name?" And you tell him the real name and then the dog responds to it. Well, now his focus is off me and he's paying attention to you. And that's a very dangerous situation. I have a girlfriend who's epileptic and her dog predicts her se- seizures twenty minutes before they happen. But if you talk to that dog, the protection's gone. She had a seizure in the middle of Walmart because some unkind person walked up and distracted her dog. So that's why most people that have service dogs, especially if they're that for those reasons, don't use their real name. He won't react to that. You could call him till the cows come home. Sorry.
No, that, that's great information. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christine Vance. I have lived in Sarpy County for over thirty years. I lived in Bellevue for ten of those. I worked animal control with the Town and Country Humane Society for eight of those. A lot of the points I was gonna make tonight have already been made. I do wanna put forth just a couple of things. Um, the AVMA states that breed-specific legislation does not address irresponsible ownership. It gives a false sense of security and reduces the emphasis on appropriate socialization and training of all dogs. Money would be better spent enforcing proven solutions or promoting responsible pet ownership by offering training to those pet owners needing assistance and developing methods to rapidly identify and respond to owners whose dogs actually present a risk. The Nebraska Humane Society does a fine job. They do what they can do for the best price for you. By adding additional legislation that they are going to have to enforce that is ultimately meaningless, is gonna take away from enforcing the laws that you already pay them to enforce. They do a fabulous job and they don't need additional work just to pick out what breed is what and are they muzzled. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bill O'Donnell, uh, 11902 Jake Circle. And yes, I'm the proud husband of my, uh, wife with her service dog. I come at it from a, a do- different perspective. I've owned Doberman Pinschers and Rottweilers since nineteen eighty-one. I'm also the past president of Doberman Rescue of Nebraska and I used to show Dobermans and American Kennel Club competitions. With that breadth of exposure to dogs from good homes and dogs who've been abused and mistreated, I know some things with absolute certainty. Certain breeds are singled out in this proposed ordinance. Now that starts the city down a, a slippery slope of legislating which breeds are proper to have. What about mixed breed dogs? What about the Belgian Malinois, who's a police dog? Who retires and his handler and his family adopt that dog? Now that dog's been trained for very specific law enforcement-related tasks. You gonna require a muzzle for that dog? We've all seen pictures of police dogs being trained, doing the bite and the grab, grab the forearms or the legs to detain the suspect. Is that dog gonna have a muzzle requirement the minute he stops being an active police dog? Where do you draw the line? You know, it sounds an awful lot like try- trying to legislate morality. Can't be done. Go further down that slippery slope and the city is gonna be held jointly liable for a muzzled dog on, dog and owner who get hurt because they supposedly, because the dog could not defend itself or its owner when attacked by a supposedly non-aggressive breed. Every dog has its own personality, just like people. We're products of the training and the parenting that we got. Dogs are products of their experience with us frail humans. I've seen dogs come out of abusive backgrounds and respond very well to, uh, positive, uh, loving, uh, parents. You know, with every dog, like I say, has its own personality. When I used to show dogs, I'd go walking through the, uh, grooming area where the dog crates are and everything and the, the big ferocious, uh, big dogs like, uh, the German Shepherds and the Dobermans. It's kinda lay around in their crates looking up at you going, "Oh, okay, stranger in the yard." And go back to sleep. You go through the grooming area with the small dogs, the Chihuahuas, the Dachshunds. And they would go berserk tr- trying to get out of their crate to get at you, snapping and snarling. Excuse me, I want no part of that. Uh, you know, I don't like to be lunch for a small dog. Um, I've had my face washed by strange pit bulls. I've had my ankle nipped by a little ball of fur. Every dog is different. Just like people, how the owners or parents treat and train you helps shape your personality. We all know people we would not turn our backs on. And the same thing applies to individual dogs.
Twenty-five seconds.
Right, you know. Bottom line, dogs and the owners who take care to train and control their dogs within existing perfectly adequate animal control laws should not be penalized. Further, you're opening up the city to a whole host of legal action by not allowing for service dogs. By service dogs, I do not mean emotional support animals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roberta Caesar, I live at 14207 South 34th Street, Bellevue. Um, I've been in animal welfare and rescue for over twenty years. Um, so dealt with a lot of dogs, cats, rabbits, and even some lizards. Um, but, uh, regarding the ordinance 4037, um, any dog can bite regardless of its size, um, or its breed. And, uh, I'm gonna reiterate, a lot of people have already said what I was gonna say tonight, but law, no law can prevent those dog bites. And an underlying issue, um, about breed-specific legislation remains that flawed idea that a dog is more dangerous because of how it looks or its breed. And that is discriminatory against the responsible dog owners and their dogs, uh, that follow the rules and are trained and are socialized. Uh, because a dog looks a certain way, they are restricted or banned. And it doesn't fix the underlying issue that we have, which is irresponsible dog ownership. Dogs can be more aggressive if they're unaltered, unsupervised, or they're not trained or socialized to be around people or other dogs. So those dogs that are tethered out in their backyards, they're kennelled all day, they're not paid attention to, they're not socialized. The Humane Society of the United States, who opposes breed-specific lays- legislation, has shown how access or lack of access of veterinary services and pet care resources play a role in the health and wellness of a pets, of an area's pet population. When pet owners have access to those services, dog-related injuries are less likely to occur. The CDC also states, um, and they oppose breed-specific legislation as well, "Dog bite reduction strategies are more likely to be effective if they focus on reducing inappropriate dog and dog owner behaviors regardless of the dog's breed instead of on banning specific breeds." Ordinance 4037 targets three specific breeds. The American Pit Bull Terrier, the American Staffordshire Terrier, Staffordshire Bull Terrier, and quote, "Any dog displaying the majority of physical traits of any one or more of these breeds." As the little exercise earlier, identifying a dog that has the majority of those breeds is quite difficult. Breedless, breed-specific legislation is costly and ineffective and it's difficult to enforce, which further strains our animal control services in our area. Funding services, um, and resources for families to get their Funding services and resources for families to get their pets proper care, training, and socialization would be more likely to reduce dog bite incidents than attempting to enforce ineffective breed-specific regulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robin Keller. I am at 305 Rex Road, and so many of my valid points have been taken. I am so, so proud of this room right now and the overflow that you cannot see raising their hands. So overflow, make some noise in a few. I wanna thank you all for continuing with this public meeting. Given the bite records for our city listed in the agenda, and thanks to the specific request of Councilman Cook, thank you. I am actually perplexed as to why this ordinance has targeted a breed that has a total of eight bites listed out of 150 for the city of Bellevue in the year of 2020. Five point three percent of all bites, and yet we're here with a serious lack of education, which actually only drives fear-mongering and division within our community. While the AVMA has been cited several times tonight, I want to cite one area from their association, Animal Welfare Division. Based on behavioral assessments and owner surveys, the breeds that were more aggressive towards people were small to medium-sized dogs, such as collies, toy breeds, spaniels. Owners of pit bull-type dogs deal with a strong breed stigma. However, controlled studies have not identified this breed group as disproportionately dangerous in any way. Given that breed is a poor sole predictor of aggressiveness, and pit bull-type dogs are not implicated in controlled studies, it is difficult to support the targeting of this breed as a basic for dog bite prevention. If breeds are to be targeted, a cluster of large breeds would be implicated, including the German Shepherd, German Shepherd crosses, and other breeds that vary by location. While many organizations have clearly paved the way for education to prevent such ridiculous ordinances, it appears as if we still had a little work to do here. Again, our city has a wonderful dog ordinance in place. Again, all in opposition to this ordinance, please raise your hands. In order to be effective leaders, elected officials must work as part of a team to create a shared vision for our future, to develop goals and plans that make the future possible for their communities and their people. Breedism is not an effective measure of growth or progress for this community. If dangerous dogs are our issue, let's address the dangerous dogs of all breeds and enforce our ordinance. Do not continue the cycle of misinformation for generations to come. Do not allow our community to be misinformed. Don't allow our children to continue to fear things that they do not know by putting muzzles on our dogs. Be the leaders who represent our community, and please vote against this regressive ordinance. Bellevue needs growth for our families, not a breed-specific ban. Thank you.
Thank you.
Name's Randy Powers, 807 West Mission Avenue, Bellevue. A lot of points were made here, you know, and this is my first meeting. We moved here two years ago from California, and we've had the same issue in California. And if you would've asked me in 2000, I would've said, this is a great ordinance, cuz I listened to the noise. Since that time, my first dog, we got when we got our first home, it was a Shar Pei. But they forgot to tell us the father was a pit, and it grew into a very large pit. But it was the best dog I ever owned. It was a protector of my family. We lived up in the San Bernardino Mountains. It scared a few bears away as well. So they turned out to be good dogs. But I would've never got that dog if they would've said it was a Shar Pei pit. I would've never done it. Since that time, we've had other pits, and right now I have a black lab German Shepherd, a blue-nosed, red-nosed pit, and a Shih Tzu Chihuahua. We always say, where the Chihuahua went, I think he ate it, because he doesn't look like a Chihuahua. But some of the most common myths, pit bulls do not have lock jaws. I hear that everywhere I go. Every time I hear somebody talk, but those lock jaw. No dog has a jaw that can lock. It's not there. The other one is, there are bred, you know, people, four pit bulls sit here and say, "Well, they're great nanny dogs." That's a myth. No dog, there's no such thing as a nanny dog. They are very protective of their pack, and they are pack animals. My dogs were raised with my eight children. Where my dogs went, my children went. Where my children went, my dogs went. They're very protective. But any dog can be dangerous. Caesar Milan once said, "What about dogs that bite?" He goes, "In other countries, when a dog bites someone, the person gets punished." Because usually it's because they did something. Dogs can't say, hey, don't do that. So if the dog's hurt and you're grabbing on its leg, it's that protected self. Some of the other thing, you know, somebody mentioned about Mastiff's, the Cagle, has a 743 PSI bite. To get, put that in perspective, humans can have a 140 PSI bite. Okay? Pit bulls actually have 238, okay? Golden Retrievers only have five less. And although they are considered an aggressive breed, the number one aggressive breed in, of dogs is the Chihuahua. And anybody that's owned it, and I have friends that have them, they could be great dogs, but they are aggressive. And the difference is, they're small. To sit here and say, you need to muzzle, I, all three of my dogs have been through eighteen weeks of training. I'm a responsible pet owner. They have all their shots. I keep them on a leash when I walk them. So blame the irresponsible people versus blaming the people that have to go an extra step. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak regarding the dog ordinance, the muzzling? Anybody in the back room, Phil? Okay, one more time before I close the public hearing. Anybody here to speak? Thank you for all coming out and your very well-behaved dog owners. I've been very quiet for this large of a crowd, so appreciate it. I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the council if they have any questions. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna make a couple of comments. The Nebraska Humane Society, I've been in contact with them, and Steve Glant is here. He's the vice president, and I believe the director, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Nancy Hints.
Nancy Hints is also here, so I don't know if anybody has any questions for them. But I just wanna just pass along that Mr. Glant and I have talked a couple of times on the phone, in person, and through emails. He has sent me every piece of information that I've asked for. Everything that I got, I've shared with all the city council members. Some of it you see up there today. I just felt it was appropriate on some of the numbers and stats that Mr. Glant gave us. It would be appropriate to attach it to our agenda tonight. I just wanna, you know, thank Steve for all that he's done. I don't know if anybody would have any questions for Steve. But I also wanna, Heather Noyes, I think was her last name, after our last meeting, Mr. Stenson and I talked to Heather out here in the parking lot. And I just, Heather, one thing I wanna say to you is I appreciate everything you've done. It's obvious you're very active. We talked about maybe some proactive things, and I would sure hope that people here today, maybe we can do some things in the community. We have a nice dog park down in Jewel Park. We got some nice parks where, you know, they'd maybe hold some events where we could maybe show owners of dogs, like you said, leash and all the other stuff you said, I think would be very valuable. But one thing I do wanna say is, is the Nebraska Humane Society provided me with information, and we have about ninety, a little bit over ninety-four hundred dogs licensed in Bellevue. And as far as dog bites, we had 125 last year. I believe the one lady, maybe Robin, referred 150. I think she was throwing in the cat bites, too.
It was total 150 with a total of eight pit bull breed bites.
Yeah, and it's just such a small number. And I just think that it's the responsible owners that have to take care of their dogs when they're walking them, make sure they're secured in backyards, make sure they're secured on leases and stuff. And everybody that has spoke tonight, I've written down your names. I wanna tell you thanks for coming out. It sounds like there's more people in the back room that are here. I don't think anybody, nobody came to the podium and spoke against, or I'm sorry, for the ordinance. And I think that says a lot tonight, what we all heard. So I appreciate everybody coming out. Everybody's busy and coming out tonight. I appreciate what you did, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Stenson?
Just wanna say, I've gone over the current ordinance that we had and the proposed ordinance, and pretty much most of the people out here have stated the ordinance that's proposed pretty much matches our current ordinance about dangerous dogs. The only problem is the proposed ordinance kinda puts the cart ahead of the horse. I don't think you punish dogs for something they haven't done. You wouldn't do that to a human being, and you shouldn't do that to a dog. So looking at this, I had more to say, but like I said, everybody's points were out there already. Pretty much what I had to say. I just don't believe that we need to do an ordinance that is already on the books until a dog is shown that they are a dangerous animal.
Thank you. Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor Hyke. I would like to hear from the Humane Society officials. Steve, if you could come up and maybe answer some questions I have? I heard some things, and I have been listening and paying attention, and I, I think we had some very informed people tonight who've given us some very good information. Could you validate for me, not that I don't believe or trust them, but from the Humane Society here locally's perspective, would you agree that it's difficult to identify pit bulls? And how do you do that in Omaha, where I believe this ordinance is already in place?
Yes, and Nancy, I don't know if you have a little more information on the, it can be a challenge based on appearance only. That is definitely true. But Nancy might be able to speak to the specific criteria for identifying and why we use that criteria.
Sure. And so we do have a breed evaluator on staff at the Nebraska Humane Society who's been with us for twelve years. She started her position at the shelter as a result of the ordinance that was passed in Omaha. And so what she does is look at all the criteria that would identify a pit bull breed as a majority, which means that 50% mark. Each of the breeds that you have listed in the ordinance that are identified as a pit bull breed have their own set of guidelines that must be looked at and followed to identify each breed. So she looks at very specifically the head of the animal, the tail, the ears, the eyes, the distance between such, all those things. So it is a fine art. And as the gentleman mentioned earlier, you know, I think in the past and maybe in the present, if it looks like a pit bull, it is a pit bull. That's what people think. But technically, if you go through the technical definition of some of these animals on their breed evaluation forms, they're not. But it is still subjective as well. We know that. But we do the best that we can to make sure that we are, you know, identifying these breeds to the best of our ability.
Okay, thank you. And can you tell me how the ordinance has worked and what has been the result of it being, I think it was in 2009, the information that Steve sent, it went into place?
That's correct.
What's been the result?
So the data shows that over the last about twelve to thirteen years, the bites for pit bull breeds have decreased about, on average, four percent. But we've identified two reasons why we believe that to be true. The first is perhaps, you know, owner compliance with the law. But the second is that less animals are being identified as meeting that 50% majority benchmark. So you're seeing decreased bites or decreased data because those animals aren't making up 50% or more of the breeds.
Okay. And in the chart that you sent, I believe, from 2009 currently, it looked like the number of bites had gone down. You said 12% on the pit bulls, but it looked like it was averaging maybe 35 a year now from a high of, I believe it was 109 on the chart.
Right.
Okay, so.
They have decreased.
Okay. One of the issues is neutering. We heard that from people. And reducing the aggression in, not breed-specific, but probably all breeds. Is that something that can be required?
That's a good question. I know the city of Omaha does not, you know. If you, if your animal is unaltered, then you pay a higher licensing fee versus those that are altered. And yes, the research and the studies show that the neutering, neutering especially does help in kinda reducing unruly behavior.
So Omaha charges more for an unaltered animal?
Yes.
Do we in Bellevue?
Yes.
Okay, so it is consistent?
It's consistent.
Good, cuz I, when, and I was here when we passed this ordinance. And for those of you who complimented it, thank you. But at that time, we didn't hear a lot of people complimenting it. At that time, people said it was terrible, kind of like we're hearing tonight. So I appreciate that you're now saying it's useful. Breed-specific laws are being overturned in other places, we heard. Can you shed any light on your experience for that?
We do know that it was recently a law in Denver, Colorado, and Colorado overturned theirs. And they had a full-on ban of pit bull breeds, and they just reversed that. And then going back to the Omaha ordinance, you know, it really stemmed out of, you know, a situation, a serious dog bite that occurred. But the law was also put into effect as a compromise to prevent a full-out ban of these breeds in Omaha as well.
Yeah, I believe I remember some of that. Do you concur with the statements about, and there were a number of initials, but the ADMA, the ADA, the ASPCA, the alphabet? Do you agree that those groups that were identified have come out saying breed-specific ordinances are not good?
It's hard for us really to, maybe to answer that question in terms of giving you a formal opinion on behalf of the Nebraska Humane Society, simply because of our role as providing animal control for the city of Bellevue. Plus, this is a law that we're enforcing in Omaha, so I kinda wanna tread gently on that. But the agencies that you mentioned have wonderful reputations. They've all done their own research. We utilize their research when we need it as well. So they are very highly regarded.
Okay. And I appreciate that, and I appreciate the awkward position that you're in, being the enforcers and doing what we, the public, want you to do and being in the middle of what we're attempting to do in terms of policy. So I appreciate the challenge of that role, and I appreciate to Councilman Cook and to me, the responses that we have received from you in this process. Education and training was another issue, and probably everybody can agree. And irresponsible owners came up frequently, and probably all of us can agree on that. How do we get to them? They're not the people in this room. This room, every dog should have an owner, like the people in this room. They care. I heard that. I saw the expressions. The amount of training they expressed is there. But laws aren't made for responsible people. Speed limits are there because people break the law. We wear masks because we wanna protect the public. So I respect that we shouldn't penalize the good, but I'm questioning the education. but I'm, I'm questioning the education and training. And how do we get to the irresponsible ones? How do we get to those people that are never going to come to this meeting?
Well, um, the, the, the problem for us is, is it is with law enforcement, is most of what we do is reactionary.
Right.
Dog bites, we show up and we, uh, enforce whatever aspects of that incident apply. Um, and like you said, like it's been, it's been said, is owner responsibility is, is top of the, top of the chain. And, and that's where we see the breakdown, um, is, is the owners fail the pets. And, um, there, there's a, a variety of, of scenarios that, that the dogs normally bite that we see. And a great number of them are going to be in-home bites, and the dog gets loose. Um, compared to, um, I'm walking my dog, it does happen, and the dog bites somebody. It does happen. Uh, but we see more from in-home bites and, um, dogs getting loose, which, uh, a muzzle law is going to be difficult to control that. And, and we simply don't have the resources, um, at our disposal to, to, to educate people. Um, I, I think it's gonna, like has been mentioned, and like, uh, Mr. Cook has mentioned, uh, I think it's gonna have to be a community response. People co- coming together, uh, creating some, some groups that, um, can come up with some, some creative ideas to, to help educate, so.
And, and I would concur. I think we've got a, an audience here that's here not because they want to be, but because they feel compelled to be. And they're willing to do something. I read in their messages, and I appreciate that. Uh, one of the things they brought up also was, this will further strain your resources, which you just mentioned. And has the Omaha ordinance strained your resources? Would this make for more workload that's already impacting, uh, the officers that are out there on the street?
Well, I, I think any, anything that, that is added i- is going to create, uh, uh, further strain. So, um, any, any added ordinances that we're going to have to, um, enforce, follow up on, investigate, um, will, will place a strain. How much of a strain? Uh, that's, that's yet to be determined. And when we're talking Bellevue with a population of 60,000 compared to Omaha, um, you know, 400,000, um, there's, there's quite a, quite a difference. Um, and, and we receive more, uh, more funding from Omaha for that reason, obviously, so.
Okay. And, and I will ask just one more. Others may, may have some. But in terms of the leash law and the, uh, registration, getting a, a license for the dog, uh, that was brought, both were brought up. And I've been in parks and out on the streets, and I see dogs regularly, not on leashes. People get to the park, let them out of the car, they're running free. And that's in some of the parks where there are a lot of kids and other people playing, uh, just not observing the, the laws. We heard a number, I think nine and a half thousand dogs are licensed in Bellevue. We gotta have more dogs than that. So, and cats, and cats out roaming. How do we get those folks to just do the simple things of keeping them on a leash and getting them licensed and vaccinated and having protections? Any suggestions? You'd probably do all you can now to try and get that.
We do. It, it is difficult, and, um, we are making efforts though to help people, but you know, tell them, come on in, we'll help you. We've got some programs that can help folks, um, pay for license fees and those kinds of things. I think it's about educating the public. Um, and if, if an animal's licensed, that means an animal has a rabies vaccination, which is,
Right.
which is key. And that is key to keep animals out of the shelter. You know, if, if an animal does happen to bite, you know, they might not have to spend 10 days at the shelter and quarantine. They might be able to quarantine at home. You know, so there is a, there is just, I think, the education piece. Um, some folks, you know, say they can't afford it. Um, but my opinion is if you have an animal, you know, then you should be able to afford, or at least budget for those fees that come with it.
Sure. I would agree. Thank you very much for your service to the metro area communities' animals. They're, they're, and you're doing your best to get them adopted, get them good homes, get training. I, I appreciate that. And I appreciate your being here tonight and answering all of our questions, mine particularly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, I have a question, but Councilman Cook?
I just want to make one comment to the two of you is, um, we have a TV channel, and we allow people to put, um, notices. And I, I don't know if, if, if the Humane Society would, would want to create, I, I suppose it'd just be, you know, a, like a flyer, flyer about the size of a sheet of paper. Phil Davison would know more about it, but it may be, uh, with your information and, you know, how to license a dog, what it's going to cost you, who to call, where to go. I mean, it's just part of the education to put it out on our TV channel. And we just put together a, a fantastic book, The Mayor and City Administrator, with Phil Davison, and we sent it to all residents or the homes. And stuff like that is where we need to get information from the Humane Society. Put in books like that where some of that moves new to the city, they can see that and know it, so. But if you guys would put together a flyer and send it to me or Mr. Risto, I think we could get it on our TV channel. And it just, it cycles through with a whole bunch of other stuff. I mentioned that to Heather, or, yeah, Heather Noyes. I mentioned that if they ever did anything in our community, create a little flyer, and we'll try to get it on our TV channel so that word just gets out better. Thank you.
Steve, that number of 125 bites, is that 125 dangerous dog labels, or is, how many of those 125?
Those are just the total, uh, the aggregate total of dog bites. 125 dog bites and then another 25 cat bites to come to that 150 total.
So how many of those are actually labeled as dangerous dogs, the 125?
Um, I don't know that I would be able to, I, I could, and I could find out and, and send that to you, but, um, I don't know that.
I thought somebody tonight said it was like eight. Is that a correct number?
Yeah. Eight being the pit bull bites, but in the total bites, according to the Nebraska statute, which I'm assuming they would follow to deem a dog dangerous, it has to be, um,
Yeah.
it must sustain medical.
Actually, we can't have the public talk. Public hearings closed. I'm sorry.
So, I, I can give you some figures.
Yep. No, you're good.
So, so currently, um, as of this year, um, there have been five, uh, PDDs, potentially dangerous dog declarations issued. Uh, we have three boxers, one American Bulldog, and one Siberian Husky. Uh, 2020, there were, um, 11 total PDDs issued. So when you compare that to the number of bites, um, a bite doesn't automatically earn a PDD. So there's, there's a lot of, a lot of factors that, that would go into it during the investigation process.
So the PDD is pretty low, really?
Yes.
And then half of those appeal it to the Board of Health? What'd you say?
Um, that's, well, I, I, I don't know if that would be accurate for here. Um, we probably, I mean, we have probably half of them, a good, uh, greater than a half, maybe 70% of them will, will appeal to NHS, I would say. And then if, um, if we deny their appeal, then they would come before the Board of Health. And I think we've had, well, we had two or three this year so far for Bellevue that have appealed, maybe two.
Two.
No, I'm sorry, it was three.
So really, we're talking about a low number of potentially dangerous dogs, so it's not 125?
When?
No. No, and, and as far as active PDDs, there are four pits, three shepherds, and one boxer, um, that are active PDDs. And those, as we know, uh, last 24 months, so.
That's what I was going to say. You'd sent me those numbers. I knew we added a couple to it, so.
Yeah.
We're about at eight that are active on that.
Yeah.
Potentially dangerous, and, and that's a two-year timeframe. So if they do all the requirements of the statute, or the ordinance, I should say, and they have no incident for two years, they go off that list.
Yeah.
And right now, out of 9,400 licensed dogs, a number you provided me about two weeks ago, maybe that's gone up a little, down a little bit, we got eight dogs on the potentially dangerous dog ordinance.
Yeah.
It's not a lot.
No.
Councilman Otsch?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I don't have any questions for you, but I just wanted to thank all of the people that showed up tonight. The one thing that you guys all brought was a lot of great information. I have, uh, had up to four dogs at one time, and there were things about pit bulls, bullies, that I learned tonight. So I very much appreciated that. I'm also the owner of Yippy Schnauzers. And my, uh, my dogs are either adopted or rescued. And my one Schnauzer came into my house because he was in a house with little kids, and he was nipping their ankles. And they felt that it was, uh, not a good situation for their two-year-old. And this dog came into my house, and that's how he gets my attention, is to nip my ankles. Um, you know, we're even here tonight because accidents do happen, unfortunately. You can have the best dog, you can leash the dog, you can have trained the dog, but sometimes there's something that just happens, and an accident happens. We, again, we cannot legislate morality, and please don't penalize the dog for what they've done.
Councilman Burns?
Thanks, Mayor. Steve and Nancy, I do want to know, can you explain some of the background? And can you tell us what happened in Omaha that really sparked this? And really, I know they put together a task force to look at this, and you said it was kind of a compromise. But can you tell us that situation and take us through it?
So from my recollection, if I'm not mistaken, it was, um, a young child, um, that had been bitten by a pit bull breed. And I believe the damage was pretty significant to her face.
And that was Charlotte? Was her name Charlotte Blevins?
I believe so.
And her mom was Wendy?
Yes.
And her, and her mom advocated it, and, uh, she was a one-year-old, and they were on a walk. And, um, I, I do believe in that situation, the dog got loose, and, uh, she had to have nine operations by the time she hit first grade. Um, so I, I just want to say that I respect every single one of you, and I really liked what Marcus said. You know, we may not agree right now, um, on this particular issue. Um, I know in the city of Bellevue, we value public safety. I think the expectation is that when we walk our pet down the street, we're not going to be attacked, or our child's going to be safe. Um, in this situation, in Bellevue, uh, Bellevue taxpayer was walking her dog on a leash, and, uh, another resident was walking his pit bull on a leash, and he lost control. His dog attacked her dog. And, and by the time, so she had a sheltie, and what her sheltie did, as, as littler dogs will do to bigger dogs, rolled over in submission and laid on its back. And she watched her dog get mauled so bad. And by the time the owner got there to take his dog off of, off of her sheltie, her beloved pet, his face was covered in blood. And it, it, it wasn't his dog's, it was, it was her sheltie. Um, she had to rush her dog to the, the, the vet. And by that time, they said that she needed to go to the emergency animal hospital, and by that time, it was too late. Her, her dog had to be euthanized. Um, a- and not only that, now we have two dogs who have been put down. So her dog, who got attacked, the pit bull, and it looks like there's a Great Dane involved, and it looks like he just turned the Great Dane over, that will now be euthanized. That's three dogs. Three, two people are losing beloved pets, and I just think that this is a situation that should have been avoided. I think people have the right to feel safe when they're walking down the street. And um, in this situation, I, I think, I think it could have been avoided, and I think we should be proactive about these things. And, and I do want to reiterate, I, I appreciate everybody, and I respect you guys so much. Um, I just would really ask, you know, s- people on this council and anybody here, you know, to put ourselves in someone's shoes who watched that, you know, or if, if I had to watch it and it was my son, I'd be devastated and I'd want something done, so. Um, I do appreciate you guys for coming here and, um, and I, I have learned a lot tonight as well, and that's all I have to share.
Uh, Councilman Burns, on that, on the situation you're talking about with the sheltie, is it my understanding, was that, was that a owner that was walking three or four dogs at the same time?
Yes, so, um.
So, again, I, I sit on the, the Board of Health, and every case I've heard come in front of the Board of Health when they're appealing, um, the NHS's decision, it's clearly the owner's fault. Um, I think every one of them, uh, you put responsibility on the owner. Um, I, I hate the label of a dangerous dog on a dog that, uh, you know, it should be a dangerous owner. Um, so. And I think when I go back to the Board of Health, I've, I've got to look at that. Um, my mind's kind of changing. Maybe, maybe we need to be a little more penalizing the owner a little bit more instead of the, instead of the animals, so.
Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor.
Did you have something on that, Thomas?
Yeah, well, and I, I take a look at this ordinance, and I agree. Um, you know, we talked about resources, and I mean, you know, and I look at the, the, the Benson attack that just happened in between now and then, and, and that's reactionary. And you said that a lot of attacks are reactionary, and, and really, I think that this leaves people with, with a few options. You know, if, if your dog is friendly, well-socialized, you know, gone through training, and, I mean, I, I sincerely believe that all of you are responsible owners, as Don said. You, you won't actually have anything to worry about, you know? Um, the other option is, is, is going through with the muscling. You know, the, the third option is, is to opt out of that and, and go through training, whether that's private or through the Breed Ambassador program. And I don't think that this is any different than a seatbelt law. You know, police don't go around, it's, it's the truth. I mean, so police officers don't go around pulling people over because they're not wearing seatbelts, but really, it's secondary, right? So there's another offense, and that's what happened in Benson. So really, we're just tacking on a fine, you know, if, if for, for whatever reason, someone does take that risk.
So since Nancy and Steve got to talk, um, Kelly Brown's here as well. Do you have anything you want to add?
Hello. Um, so my position, you know, this might be a little bit biased because I have over 20 years of experience as an animal control officer and investigator for the Nebraska Humane Society. Um, and I'm just going to start off by saying I don't envy you guys this decision at all. And I'm, I trust that you guys are going to make the right decision tonight. Um, just kind of explaining from both sides of the fence how this works. Um, the owners that you have here in the room tonight are the exception to dog owners. Great people. They've worked with their animals. They've taken the time to make sure that these animals are going to be good model societ- or citizens to society. Um, but as I think one of you had pointed out, the ones who are really worried about are not here tonight. Those are the ones who are not training their animals, who are not being responsible, who are not, um, you know, choosing to do the right thing with their pets. And that's where these dogs become a danger. Um, I think that another person who's sitting behind me had pointed out some really good facts. Pit bulls are not more predisposed to attacking than any other dog. That is false. Um, they're just like any other pet. They don't have locking jaws. They're not some monster of an animal. But they are a very tenacious breed, and that's what makes them dangerous. If they do, if they do become involved in an attack, it could be more devastating. And that's where, um, these ordinances kind of tear me, you know? Um, because as an animal control officer, we're out in the public, um, investigating these cases, as Steve had men- um investigating these cases, as Steve had mentioned, it's a very reactive job, so I'm only there if your dog does something. Um, in this type of situation, you have the opportunity to maybe be proactive and say, well, here's what we're gonna do to ensure that these animals are not going to injure somebody. Uh, because ultimately, you know, children and other pets are at the mercy of this decision tonight. Um, there's animals here who are gonna be punished, even though they haven't done anything wrong. But there's also children or other pets who are going to be attacked or even mauled and killed because we didn't make the right decision, so it's hard to say what that right decision is. Um, I will point out, just from working as an officer, that there are outs to this, so if we don't wanna muzzle our dogs, then we have to train them, we have to go through breed ambassador programs to make sure that the dogs have passed those tests. They are good with other animals, they're good with people, they're not going to be involved in an attack in the community. Um, if they have gone through those steps, then they can be deemed what's called a breed ambassador, and they don't have to wear the muzzle in public. Um, the other requirements associated with this ordinance would be like a uh uh liability insurance, which if we're responsible people, we should have liability insurance on our homes anyway. Um, it also requires harnessing, which that's a good restraint tool for an animal. Um, spaying and neutering, that's responsible, it doesn't hurt anybody. Um, but ultimately, yeah, we have to make that decision, is this gonna be right for all the good people who have never done anything wrong? Um, I am the investigator who handled the Charlotte Blevins case, and that's something that I will never forget. Having to be graphic, I'm just gonna tell you, having to go out on a cobblestone street and pick pieces of a child's scalp out of the street to rush it to the hospital, something I'm never going to forget. Um, when I first started as an animal control officer, I was very much a gung-ho, pit bulls are great animals, I hate people who hate pit bulls type of thing. You know, but I've done this job a long time, and and I'm just gonna point out a fact that I haven't seen a golden retriever do that to a child. Um, I know we all laugh and think it's kinda funny that chihuahuas are ankle biters, it is true, they're kinda brats. But chihuahuas aren't involved in fatal attacks either. Um, if we look at the national statistics, we shouldn't be limited, just here to the city of Bellevue, we're gonna look at national fatal animal attack statistics. Pit bulls do make up a large majority of those. Um, so, you know, th- this ordinance, it gives you the ability to be proactive in your community and try to do what you can to ensure that nobody is going to suffer what this poor individual suffered about a month ago in Bellevue, um when the pit bulls had attacked their dog. Um, you know, but at the same time, as Steve and Nancy mentioned, it's not gonna stop an in-home attack, but there's a lot of fatal in-home attacks with children, with elderly people, um, you know, but it could. You know, if we tell people that you have a dog that we feel is more inherently dangerous because of its ability and its tenacity, should it be involved in attack? Here's what we're gonna do, we want it to be muzzled. Um, then, you know, that that's a a good thing for you because you can be proactive and try to stop those, but it isn't gonna stop everything. Um, but you do have that breed ambassador portion in there, which is good, so if people don't want to muzzle their animals, then they can try to go that route and not have to muzzle, they would just have to do the liability insurance and the the harnessing in public. Um, so again, I don't envy you guys having to make this decision, and I'm sorry it happened in the community, but I I I have no doubt that you'll make the right one, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Kelly? Okay, like, thanks. Um, any more comments, Councilwoman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. This has been very educational, I appreciate it, I came in with an open mind, I think I still have it. Uh, those that testified did influence me, and you presented some very good information. I think Councilwoman Burns came in with the things he said because it touched him. And seeing somebody whose dog was impacted and then they were, touched him deeply. What I didn't understand, though, was that seems like part of his motive was for his friend to get a celebration of his anniversary tonight and gather people together. But aside from that, I I think he's well-meaning, I think he wants to do some things that are good, and I think all of you do. I hope you stay engaged, but one thing that I think we've done, it has been a very productive hour or so that we've been on this topic, because this is being filmed live, and it will be rebroadcast. So there's a lot of education that's gonna take place, just as a result of people viewing these meetings. So that in itself is good, and I thank Thomas for raising the issue, bringing it to this level, which is what a good representative does. We don't always agree, but we need to keep the issues alive and have productive discussions. And I thank all of you for this civic lesson tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any more comments, questions? All right, well, um, good discussion, and again, thank you all for coming out this evening. So, the third reading will be June first, two thousand twenty-one, at six PM here in the council chambers, where that vote will take place that evening, so, again, thanks and have a safe trip back home. Okay, item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading thirteen A, ordinance number four zero three eight, an ordinance to reflect pay ranges for employees of the city that are covered under approved collective bargaining agreements and those positions that are unclassified. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero three eight, an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range sched- schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance number thirty-nine ninety-seven, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be June first, two thousand twenty-one, at six PM here in the council chambers. Item fourteen, uh, there are no public hearing on matters other than ordinances this evening. Item fifteen, resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two zero two one dash twelve, request to approve the redevelopment plan for lots one through six, blocks, block one thirty, Bellevue and the Vacated Avenue adjacent. Applicant Ivy Properties, Inc., general location, two zero zero nine Franklin. Take a motion. Councilwoman Burns.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. I move that we approve um resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twelve.
Second. Motion by Burns, second by Stinson. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Tammy, I just got a que- I should've called you, and I forgot. It refers to to- townhouse-style apartment units. How many levels do you think that'll be?
Based on the site plan, and the applicant's attorney is here, so she may be able to correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it's a two-story apartment building, if I'm correct. Three. Okay, so three-story.
Three-story.
So you have a garage, and then you'll have two levels above the garage.
And the current building at the site, is that gonna be removed?
No, that will be phase two, that'll be a later phase. Um, the plan as of now is to leave it a commercial building and completely rehabilitate it. Um, but that part of the development would stay commercial. The property to the north that is currently vacant is where the residential would be, so the portion of the property that abuts Washington Park would be residential with the current existing building staying for a future commercial use.
Thank you.
Any more comments or questions? Okay, motion by Burns, second by Stinson, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item fifteen B, resolution number two zero two one dash thirteen, a resolution adopting the Sarpy County and City's Wastewater Agency Resolution twenty twenty dash zero one three, a resolution adopting and approving the policies and procedures implementing the growth management plan for the Sarpy County and City's Wastewater Agency, and authorize the mayor to sign. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, I'll make a motion to reapprove resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirteen.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Comments or questions? Jim, do you have anything? Lot, it's taken a lot of work, so just feel like somebody should say something.
So, you know, one of the questions was, I think Mr. Cook had asked me about this, we've been working on this the better part of over a year. Um, with the the initial phase of the program was, the wastewater treatment plant was gonna be put in Springfield. Um, about late fall, early fall last year, they shifted that route to the wastewater facility in Bellevue, which was a game changer for us because it redefined what we had to look at for what our growth management would be, what our rates would be, what we already have existing infrastructure that we didn't wanna surrender. So we've spent the better part of a year, um, Bree, now Doug, and ourselves. I think we've learned more about sewer than we'd ever care to. But I would say that this um final agreement represents our taxpayers and our city to the nth degree, so uh our joke has been, we don't wanna be those guys that ten years from now, they not, they say, what was that dummy doing? So I think we've protected our interests uh for the long haul. They've got all the right language in this this process uh that that takes care of us, so there's a couple others that are gonna come up on here that'll be along the same lines, but a lot of hard work from staff to get this right, so.
Yep, a lot of good work, I appreciate it, um, because there was, there were some items in here that really would have affected our future and uh
There's a lot of slippery language, it was kind of like, uh, kinda like to be determined later, but what was the one term, Bree, that they used that um, make the agency whole was one of the the line items in there. And we were just trying to get, what is the definition of make the agency whole? So what we didn't wanna do is get a ten million dollar bill ten years from now to make them whole, so we had to pound all those little nuances out, but it's getting to all the fine detail, which I think in the end, it's it's turned out well for us, so.
Okay, again, thanks.
Bree, you do like talking sewer, don't you?
Any more comments or questions? Councilwoman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a a a comment, as we open this whole area up to development. One of, I got a call today about, are we just adding to urban sprawl? And what are we doing about reducing traffic, providing public transportation, making sure there's bicycle access? So as we go down this road, I've I've raised the issue with with Sarpy County as they're developing some of that. And they have been attempting to put bicycle lanes and some additional amenities in that help mitigate some of the urban sprawl type of problems that is ex- being experienced in West Omaha, so we go a little bit farther south. So I hope we keep that in mind, I hope we continue to make sure we have alternatives for transportation, that we provide things in the developments so that we can in the future get people to jobs with, other than just car-centric kinds of approaches. Thank you.
So duly noted, and that's probably something for future land development that, you know, we'll be meeting on, so. But this is, this is the first thing you have to have is sewer and water, so.
Okay, motion by Cook, second by Welch, please vote. Thank you, fifteen C, resolution number two zero two one dash fourteen, a resolution adopting the Sarpy County and City's Wastewater Agency Resolution twenty twenty dash zero one four, a resolution adopting and approving a revised sewer user rates and connection fees schedule, and establishing related policies and procedures for the unified SSWS for land development within the agency's jurisdiction, and authorize the mayor to sign. Take a motion. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution number two zero two one dash one four, as just read.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen is current business, sixteen A, approve and authorize mayor to sign interlocal agreement between the cities of Sarpy County regarding jail facilities, prosecutorial functions, and other services. Take a motion. Councilman Stinson?
Make motion, we approve sixteen A.
Second.
Motion by Stinson, second by McCaw. Any questions, comments? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen B, request to approve funding for the Bellevue Bee Cycle Project in an amount not to exceed fifty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll move to approve sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns, comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll I'll just mention, you probably saw in the packet that about half of this will be paid by the NRD through a grant, so I wanna thank Tammy Palm for applying for that grant. We've also got a three and a half thousand dollar grant that will be applied to it. And the Bellevue Bicycle Club and others are also working on a GoFundMe page and some other opportunities. So this would be a maximum, it would get us started with the project, and we can reimburse some of that money. Or in the future, it could be put into a second bee cycle station. And I mention that because uh Papillion didn't seek any additional funding from the NRD or anybody else. They set up two stations on their own and just paid for it outright. So I think we're managing the people's money well, and we're leveraging it, and I think it's a good opportunity. And I I thank the uh Complete Streets panel for supporting it and our own planning department, so, thank you.
More comments or questions? Motion by Preister, second by Burns, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen C, recommend approval to purchase new laptops and printers for the cruisers in an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-one thousand twenty-six dollars and five cents. Need a motion? Councilman Stinson?
Make motion, we approve sixteen C.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stinson, second by Welch, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign agreement with DPS LLC for the Keystone Trail Repair South of Highway seven, three seventy project in an amount not to exceed ninety-one thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars, five cents, plus a ten percent contingency of nine thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-one cents for a total project cost of a hundred thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Take a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen D, as just read.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Sixteen E, approve and authorize mayor to sign interlocal agreement with Sarpy County and City's Wastewater Agency. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen E.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch, comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Okay, administration reports are turned at the first meeting, uh, May report will be attached to the June first council packet. Uh, we have no closed session, and uh, take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Stinson. Second by Cook to adjourn. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thanks, everybody.